I have listened on Guam's call to order. Before we recessed, we were on Bill 309. And I would like to recognize the author, yes, for 309.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I had an amendment on the floor at that time. Senator Rodriguez had introduced an amendment, and I had made an amendment to the amendment. Senator, the amendment to the amendment would be to take that Section B that Senator Rodriguez had presented and just move it as a new Section F in the same section. So that would allow then any excess revenues from the, any additional Section 30 revenue to be used to pay federal matching requirement or local matching requirement for any Medicaid shortfall. And so that was the amendment I had made, and maybe we should dispose of that amendment.
Okay.
In the discussion with Senator Rodriguez, if I recall correctly, and somebody may, who may have other, he had no objection to putting that, and also it would be retaining the words "in the order of priority" and just add a new Section F.
Because I know that what Speaker Ben was talking about is true, it's just that you're right, he had made that, and that's why I'm saying that technical. We're going to have to take a brief recess. And because of that technicality, I'm going to suspend discussion until Senator Rodriguez, you know, comes in. So I'm going to go back again, as agreed, that if we move on to allow the author to provide additional information, that I'll go back as soon as the author is ready. And so we're going to go back to 307 with Senator Uggan.
Good afternoon, Madam Speaker, and good afternoon to our fellow colleagues. Thank you, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to revisit Bill Number 307 dash 32 COR. Based on our conclusion, our previous conclusion of discussion of this proposal, Madam Speaker, there were some concerns raised by the good Senator from Talavofu now Dededu in regards to ensuring or getting a, or providing a provision where, in fact, it would not negate and it would clarify and not negate any previous action of this body within the last five months. So I do have an amendment that he had previewed, and he did not have any objections. I was hoping that he would be able to join us here this afternoon, Madam Speaker. But the senators, the provision reads, and it will be incorporated into the bottom of the Section 1. If you recall, there was amendment, an amendment that was made, so now this is an amended version, but a, the last sentence on Section 1, to incorporate the verbiage, "Nothing herein shall delete, negate, or supersede the provisions contained in Public Law Number 32 dash 136", end quote. So that is the proposed amendment, Madam Speaker, that would address the concerns of the good Senator from Talavofu now Dededu in regards to ensuring that this provision, because of the notwithstanding clause, he was concerned that it may have unintended consequences in terms of overriding some of the previous decisions and laws that are, that this, previous decisions that this body made and laws that were previously passed within the last few months. So, Madam Speaker, with the concurrence of the members of this body, I'd like to move for that adoption. Thank you.
So what I'd like for you to do one more time, because I, the way you wrote your amendment here, but can you just read exactly what it would say, where it says, "Nothing herein shall negate or supersede"? That's how it's going to read? Because can you please read the entire sentence?
That's correct. Just incorporate it into the bottom. You're absolutely right, Madam Speaker. Incorporate it to the, as the last sentence in Section 1, subsection D, to read, "Nothing herein shall delete, comma, negate, or supersede the provisions contained in Public Law Number 32 dash 136", period.
And, okay, and with that, that's the new amendment that you wanted to provide versus originally what you had was, "Nothing herein shall prohibit", so we're not using...
That's correct.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Senators, I want to make this really very clear, and Senator Rispio had an amendment prior to this. So you're saying that we're going to keep, we're not doing anything to remove that "Nothing herein shall prohibit the retroactive payment for, from January 15, 2014", and then add again, "Nothing herein shall delete"? See, there's two, there's...
Madam Speaker, I mean, if we want, I understand, "Nothing herein, nothing herein", if we can allow legal counsel to make the appropriate verbiage or provide the appropriate language so that it reflects how it should read, but...
To incorporate the both, but, both of them, so that it's not "Nothing herein", and another one, "Nothing herein". Is that correct?
Okay. I just want to make sure, Madam Speaker, that...
You're right. And that's why I'm saying this, because I want everyone to please understand then that what was accepted, which was Senator Rispio's amendment, is "Nothing herein shall prohibit the retroactive payment from January 15, 2014", that was already adopted. Then you're now providing another amendment after that, saying, "Nothing herein shall delete, negate, or supersede the provisions contained in Public Law 32 dash 136". So that means there's going to be two "Nothing herein", and you're asking now that legal counsel then look at both language, but both, if both of them, of course, are accepted, that, to make sure that it is worded correctly based on the two "Nothing herein".
That's correct. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Did I make that clear, does everyone, I want to make sure everybody understands this. So on the Uggan amendment, which you all have before you, are there any objections or any discussions? There being none, so we're, and that legal counsel would definitely incorporate these two, and legal counsel will, will have that information. So on the motion then, the main motion, if anybody else wants to speak, there being none, on the motion to send 307 dash 32 to the third reading file, oh wait, I'm sorry, what, I, well, you have something else, Senator? Okay. Yes, I mean, I will give you that, yes.
Just one closing comment, Madam Speaker, because obviously I need to, to once again clarify in regards to the retroactive component of this and the flexibility that is being provided to the judiciary of Guam, that my understanding is that, yes, this legislature understands that the retroactive component is an accumulated obligation. So whether it is contained, the funding source is contained in the other piece of legislation that we have yet to complete our discussion on, or whether it's provided in a subsequent legislation sometime, hopefully in July, if not August, that I want to assure the judiciary and their employees that the application of this provision also would include the necessary funds to apply equity across the board to their brothers and sisters in the executive branch. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. So on the motion to send 307 dash 32 to the third reading file without any objections, so we're... 307. Three, oh, 307 to the third reading file. I read that earlier. No objections, yes. Thank you. Moving now on to 309, Senator, Speaker Ben, you're recognized in 309, oh, Senator Rodriguez. Yesterday when we left, there was an amendment to the amendment, your amendment is where we left off, and Speaker Ben had proffered a compromise, and so, but we can't move forward because you were the mover of that amendment, and I need to get your concurrence, because that's a, it would be a technical thing for, I just can't move it without you. So Senator Rodriguez, you're recognized.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Speaker. Yes, Madam Speaker, I'm, after our long discussions, I'm very much open to that compromise. I think I initially indicated that I would like this provision wherein it, it had, it's a language that, if we are to get these, these funds, that in order of priority, the first priority would be for the Medicaid program. As we know, as I indicated yesterday, there is a huge shortfall in the Medicaid program. It is the second quarter of this fiscal year is when we already saw the shortfall, and really, it was no, no fault on our part or the executive branch's part, it's just that, you know, there's, there's, our people who are, who are enrolling into the program, who are eligible, and then really, some of these people, Madam Speaker, they don't have a choice. If you go to private insurance, number one, it's, it's a lot costlier. Number two, I believe there's only one insurance company that offers individual plans. And so this, you know, I just want to just state for the record that this thought that I heard a previous speaker yesterday speak about, you know, "We're just putting money in here, and, you know, we've gave them already so much money", I think really needs to understand that, you know, this is what it is. It is a, a public assistance program, you know, and so I'm sure we can get into that discussion, that debate, in another time. But, so yes, I'm, I'm open to, instead of having it on A, that it be now on sub item F. So if I can move...
So what we'll do then is that, because you made that, you proffered that amendment earlier, and based on the amendment to your amendment is for F, can I ask if you can just officially then withdraw the B, and maybe you can make that without even having to go to Speaker Penglin?
Sure, okay. If we can just withdraw what was made yesterday, and what I'd like to do, Madam Speaker, is now move that the amendment that was, that was circulated yesterday, be now marked as item F, and that would be on page...
Does everyone understand then, to make sure that's clear, the withdrawal then of, from it being B, there's no objections to that, and then you would, now would be to make it an F?
That's right.
And no objections to that? So we're... Yes, you're right. Yeah, yes.
That's right. And if, and then thank you, Madam Speaker, for that. And also, you know, Madam Speaker, I think I would like to just, just share with our colleagues as well is that, you know, we don't know where this, this legislation's gonna, is going to end up, you know? But I think it's, you know, it's, it's just the right time as well, as I stated yesterday, that we really need to seriously look at the, this, the health, the Medicaid program. We've, I shared yesterday that we have private providers who have stopped, so have suspended accepting this program because of non-payment by the government, and so, and yes, we've traditionally not provided full funding, but it's something that must be, must be looked at and also prioritized as we move forward. So thank you again, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the, on the motion, Speaker Penglin, and you're recognized. Yes, already he's done it. We've done the withdrawal of, of B to then acceptance to F. Yes, so now I'm recognizing you. Already, we did, I did, I said, "There are no objections", and then, yeah. You're right. Okay, so we're, you're right, we are.
Yes, I am. I just...
Oh, okay. Okay, no, that, no, that's why, because you're not going to say anything on this. Okay, so on that, okay. All right, all right, real good. So let me get... Okay, so on the main motion then, Senator Lachaco, oh, wait, who among the three of you are just, Hadi? I'll have, I'll put all of you down, up, okay.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, Madam Speaker, to have the opportunity to speak on Bill 309. And I had the opportunity to listen to the various discourse that has been going back and forth regarding the bill, and I want to commend the author for identifying, obviously, some, some rather, not rather, but very important needs that need to be addressed. There's, there's no doubt, I believe, that all of our colleagues, based on what we've, what we've had the opportunity to express on the, on session four today, identifies that all of these needs are definitely worthy of funding, and they should be, and we should find reliable funding sources in order to, to, to address these issues. But, Madam Speaker, there was a, a, a press release from Congresswoman Burdalo that came out earlier this morning that acknowledged that there is a undetermined amount of funds that potentially could equal the $20 million or so that of excess Section 30 funds, or I should say reimbursed Section 30 funds that are owed back to us. But there was also a reference that there's an additional $22 million, or, excuse me, not an additional, but there's a $22 million liability that potentially could be owed, and I'll, I'll read from the Congresswoman's press release here, which identifies it. And the reason why I believe it's, it's, it needs to be discussed further is that it clearly says that the Department of Interior and Treasury has also informed Guam that approximately $22 million in unused funds that were advanced to Guam for the Make Work Pay tax credit is owed back to the Treasury. And so when, when we look at this potential $20 million and another liability of $22 million, what is Bill 309 really accomplishing? And I know the language is written in such that, okay, if these funds come to fruition, well, let's execute the appropriation in this manner, but it doesn't take into consideration this $22 million liability, and I think that's putting the cart before the horse, and I think many of the colleagues would agree that we can't do that. We, it's a disservice to, to our constituents. It's, it's a promise that, not necessarily a promise, but it's, it's, it's $2 million short of what we owe back to the Treasury. Surely, we can't pursue this. Surely, we need to maybe take a step back, and I'd like to motion to, to send the bill back to committee in light of this recent development. You know, in, in fact, the Congresswoman references that, at the same time the communication of the $20 million in Section 30 funds was communicated, so was the $22 million liability. So I'm, I'm not sure how we can, we can responsibly move forward, knowing that we need to take into consideration this, this, this $22 million liability, and in fact, we need to start looking for an additional $2 million to figure out how to pay back as well. Now, whether they grant us some sort of leniency on issuing the funds over a course of time doesn't, doesn't take away the liability, and thus needs to take into consideration what we're attempting to do in Bill 309. So the motion is to send the bill back to committee considering the information that has been proffered or provided by Congressman, Congresswoman Burdalo. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
There's a motion then to send it back to the committee, and, okay, so I usually would yield to the author's synthesis of this bill, but would you, okay. Speaker Penglin, then.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, you know, I'd rise to object to that motion, and basically, it's based on the information that is available. That information that we received an overpayment of 22 has been known to this administration, to the Congresswoman, to this body for the last three or four years. The Make Work Pay was a credit authorized to be paid to working individuals and families by the Obama administration as part of the ARRA program of economic recovery. It was supposed to put disposable income back into the pockets of working individuals so that they can spend it on the economy, generate additional taxes. When Congress passed that law, for the first time ever, there was an appropriation as part of passing the Make Work Pay that said that the Department of Revenue and Tax would, or that an appropriation is needed, is, is done to be paid over to the Treasury of Guam to cover the cost of the credit that is paid out. And what the Department of Revenue and Tax did was submit a bill to Treasury that, in this fiscal year, we need 13 million. They, it was, I think, a three-year program, and so over the course of the three years, Revenue Tax every year sent an invoice to Treasury, and Treasury transferred the money based upon the invoice to Revenue Tax. At the conclusion of the Make Work Pay, they then ran what was actually paid out, because the billing to Revenue, to Treasury was based on estimate, how many people, but it's based on income and so forth. So at the conclusion of the Make Work Pay, they actually ran all the refunds and the tax returns, and they identified in those refunds and tax returns what portion of the refund was the cash used to pay the Make Work Pay. When they reconciled that number, they, we found out, Revenue Tax, the administration, both this one, as the incoming administration, found out that there was an over remittance of $22 million. And so the administration has been looking at how to best deal with paying back this $22 million. The gov, we have sent letters to the governor over the last three years, reminding him that, "Governor, there's this liability out there that we need to account for. Where is it in the budget"? We looked at the 2012 budget, there was no set aside, there was no reduction in incoming Section 30, because we were still paying back other over reimbursement of Section 30 at that time. As a matter of fact, we paid off the last Section 30 reduction based on an over reimbursement of Section 30 by the federal government to the government of Guam, and that was through a memorandum of understanding between Revenue Tax, the administration, and U.S. Treasury. Now, when they spread out that obligation, we were paying back, I believe, $2.7 or $2.8 million a year, and I think that was over a five or a seven-year period, and that was interest-free. So we paid it back every year by reducing next year's Section 30 allotment to Guam. And so, and we were not being charged interest on that time, so it was an interest-free loan. So we've been reminding the administration that we have this $22 million. And so the administration finally, in this year's budget, submitted to the legislature the five-year forecast of the expenditures of the government of Guam, five-year revenue and five-year expenditure. And in this five-year expended, in this budget submitted by the governor for the five-year forecast, he has beginning, he has beginning in fiscal year 2015, the current budget now that is under discussion by the body, he has set aside to reduce from Section 30 as part of debt that we need to pay, a $5.5 million reduction in next year's Section 30, so that we can begin paying back this $22 million liability. In 2016, he does the same, '17, and '18. So this repayment of this $22 million liability that everybody has been aware of for several years now is finally being addressed by the governor in his submission of his five-year forecast, and he funds the first year's payment of $5.5 million through the executive budget in his request. So in the current budget, there is a $5.5 million set aside to pay back this liability over five years. And that is why, when we look at and reconcile what we're going to get from this additional Section 30, plus what we owe the federal government, the governor is already telling us that in his FY 2015 budget and in his five-year forecast, that he is setting aside the repayment of this $22 million. And so that's why we feel very comfortable that we will move forward on setting aside this new additional Section 30 that we'll receive in 20, in, in this fiscal year, that we will set it aside for the obligations as placed in the bill. So the governor is addressing this issue, the, the repayment of over reimbursement to the Guam Treasury by the IRS for Section 30, for Make Work Pay in this case, and this is interest-free. So why would we take $22 million that we get now, pay off a $22 million liability that the governor is saying, "Here's my program to pay that off, and it's interest-free"? Why would we take that 22 and pay off an interest-free loan? The governor has been taking money from tax credits and so forth to pay loans that accumulate interest. That's his priority. And so what we're doing, Madam Speaker, is taking the priorities of both this administration and this body in terms of implementing the HACE study and fully implementing that. The governor, this body, if you recall, a couple of months ago, you know, got together and said, "Let's pay this HACE study", and the governor said, and we made an appropriation of $7 million in the budget. The governor, on Valentine's Day, started paying off 50%. We're short, we need to find the additional money. We have this new revenue source that is not committed at this time, and we recognize that, as the good Congresswoman has said, yes, the federal government, the IRS, has confirmed that these two federal agencies will owe the government of Guam money, do owe the government of Guam money. In the next couple of weeks, one reconciliation will be completed, and we should then get the certification for how much money we will be related to Guam, transmitted and covered over to the Department of Revenue and Tax and the General Fund of the government of Guam as identifiable Section 30 reimbursement. And then the other one is ongoing, and should we conclude, conclude it soon. And yes, we do recognize the $22 million obligation. The governor recognizes it. The governor has indicated how he's going to deal with it, and I agree with him. We're, if we're going to get this $5.5 million, and he has been working with Treasury on finalizing that MIU according to Revenue Tax, and it's going to be interest-free, then I say, we take the five years, we take an interest-free loan in this case, and reduce the future Section 30 as the governor is accounting for in his five-year forecast. So that's why I think, you know, this idea that, that we shouldn't move forward because of this liability is not enough justifiable reason to send the bill back to committee, because the governor... because the governor has indicated, submitted to the legislature, his plan for the next four, five years on how to deal with that 22 million dollar liability. And that is going to be on an incremental basis over five years that he has, he is working on with U.S. Treasury. Now, yes, correct. If the bill, if the reimbursement doesn't happen, then, of course, you can't implement the appropriation. It's the same with any appropriation that we make. The money's not collected, you can't implement it. The governor, though, has transferred authority in a lump sum budget that he can work on. So, that's why I object, Madam Speaker, because I think, and I recognize, and I support the governor's efforts that hopefully we'll get the final conclusion on, on extending this liability out through an interest-free loan from the U.S. Treasury and taking the 22 million dollars or the 20 million dollars that we will get and applying it to these liabilities of our employees who we already have begun to half fill a promise. Now, we're just trying to fully fulfill that promise. And I think that this bill with this allocation and this priority will fully fill the promise of fully implementing the Competitive Wage Act for Guam employees who everybody has said deserves the raise and everybody has supported in implementing that HACE study plan. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. On the amendment, where is it? Senator Ogden, oh, he won. I have him down on the list. On the on the amendment, which is his motion, oh, motion, okay, motion. Senator Ogden was going to, so. So, there is an objection. So, well, go ahead and call for the votes then. All those then in favor of Senator Yimchiakas' motion, which is to send 309 back to the committee, please raise your hand. Failed. On the main motion, I have Senator Morrison and then Senator. Senator Morrison.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I have heard the debate on the floor regarding this measure, Madam Speaker, and I've also heard, and I appreciate the logic with on the debate between both sides. But if you rewind back, Madam Speaker, to the public hearing, the Education Policy Board and the superintendent clearly do not support this measure. And I'm concerned if the Education Board, the Policy Board and the superintendent do not support this measure, Madam Speaker, why are we debating it? From my recollection, it was this body that created a board or an Education Policy Board to insulate our children from politics. Madam Speaker, this is an elected body that came before us at the public hearing that is that the people have entrusted in them to do the work of the education system. And just like us, Madam Speaker, the people trust us to do the right thing. I support our education system. My teach, my wife is a teacher in it. My daughter is a student in it. And I have to ask the question again, if the Education Board and the superintendent came here clearly and and made it clear to us their reasons for what not supporting this measure, again, why are we debating it? I also find it alarming, Madam Speaker, that when you have the Education Board and the superintendent clearly not supporting this, that we're still going to continue down this road of passing, trying to attempt to pass legislation that clearly they do not concur with. I believe there was a letter also provided to us today requesting support to remove some of these sections. So, Madam Speaker, if we if we truly want to support our education system, I think we ought to support our education system, then my point to all this is we should seek the concurrence of the Education Policy Board and the superintendent before we even pursue proceed any further. I think we are tampering with our education system. We're having them meddle into the politics of this body, or we're playing politics with our schoolchildren. And I take exception to this, Madam Speaker. My daughter is a public school student. And when I, I I think all of us was there at that public hearing and saw them clearly down, all in a row, clearly opposed to this measure. So, Madam Speaker, I don't know why we're debating this. And we should seek the concurrence of the board and the superintendent. Thank you.
Point of information, Madam Speaker.
Please state the point of information.
Yes, thank you very much. I agree with the with the Senator, Madam Speaker, that the board had sent and testified against Section B of this bill. And the objections of the Policy Board were things like setting a 200, a 2,700 student limit at GW. That portion has been removed from the bill. The other objection was requiring students and teachers to move out of Tijen. That section has been removed from the bill. The objection of issues relating to the authority of the board over making a decision on whether to have a high school at Tijen or not, that portion is no longer in the bill. So, the committee took very, very careful action and took to heart the objections of the board with regards to what was originally introduced. Because if you look at the letter, it says, we object to the bill as introduced. This bill is as substituted. And so, in my discussion with the superintendent at the GW graduation today, I had outlined for him exactly what was removed. And he's saying, you know, that he's grateful and thankful that we removed those things. Now, that, Madam Speaker, is, I want to assure the good Senator, is what has resulted in this bill. So, all this bill does, Madam Speaker, is, of course, make sure that GW gets 6 million dollars to repair the schools. So, they would get that 6 million, and the repairs would be done. And there were questions as, what's going to be done? We're not even telling them how to repair the schools. We're just saying, you have 6 million dollars, here's the 6 million, make sure that you do the renovation and repair of GW. Same thing the governor said at the GW graduation today. We're going to give you money to repair your schools and rebuild your schools, and that's exactly what this bill does. In addition, of course, if the Department of Education wants to build anything at Tijen or the governor in this case, because the superintendent says, I have no say in this. This is not even my say. Whether I'm up there or not is not even my call. I'm up there because I got a court. I'm supposed to move. So, this is all regards to any additional construction at the school. They can identify the funding source, send it down here, and we'll entertain that. So, it doesn't do anything about the powers of the board over districting, the powers of the board whether to open a school or not, the powers of the board to set attendance limits at the school, the power of the board to set the maximum number of students. All of those have been removed. And the only remaining thing is, does this body want to give 6 million dollars to GW to make the necessary repairs to improve the facilities? And I believe that that is a proper and certainly, for me, a priority with regards to the use of any additional money for that purpose. Secondly, if there's anything else to be done at Tijen, then the governor can send out a bill that says, I want to do these things at Tijen, here's how I'm going to fund it. I'm not going to do it by tax credit because tax credits are blind expenditures that this legislature never sees and never knows. It's exactly what happened in the tax credits on the LaZon decision. We never knew, we never saw, yet they started issuing it out. Now, we got to account for the tax credit. So, all this is saying is, don't use tax credits. If you want to do something at Tijen, let's make it straight up, open, transparent. Let's put a bill together, send it down here, and the legislature would entertain it as it does every other capital improvement project. So, I I certainly agree with the statements made, but I wanted to add that additional information that the objections of the board have been removed from the bill.
Thank you. Senator Yamashita, did you wish to speak on his amendment? I'm I'm sorry. Okay. Oh, okay. Senator Morrison, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I appreciate the author's discussion, Mr. Speaker. I I'd like to now refer, Mr. Speaker, to to the letter addressed to the speaker today. Let's briefly go over some requests from these. This is signed by the superintendent. And it basically states that Bill 309, as substituted, contains a new subsection B that would direct 6 million to the Guam Department of Education to renovate the George Washington High School campus. In addition, the language would delay the construction of a new DOE facilities, including gymnasiums, office warehouses, and warehouses, mezzanines at Tijen. So, Mr. Speaker, I think all of us got this letter today. And I'd like to proceed with amendment to address this letter, Mr. Speaker, and delete Section B entirely. I'd like to call the question.
I believe there are others that wish to speak. Senator Ada and then Senator Yamashita.
Mr. Speaker, I called the question, call the vote.
That would be a motion to reconsider, since the body already voted down that motion.
I I was to speak on the main motion, Mr. Speaker.
You wanted to speak on his motion.
So, Mr. Speaker, make, make. Mr. Speaker, make your motion to reconsider.
But you're you're telling me that I'm not going to listen to Senator Yamashita's position.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, for allowing me to speak. And so, the the letter that Senator Morrison was referring to is what we all did receive. And the superintendent, and I'm, and he did copy all the board members on this, was asking for more flexibility. They certainly appreciate the 6 million dollars, but they're asking for more flexibility in that, and they didn't want specifically to say that it was going to be used to renovate GW High School. But I do want to say one thing about this, Mr. Speaker, and that is, this decision to move to Tijen really was DOE's. It really was DOE's. And the reason why I know that is because I've been in many conversations where I really believed that we should have realigned our students and they should have gone to Southern High. We have so many rooms in our school system. There was no need to build another high school here. But John Fernandez made a case, and his board made a case. They did not want to realign our our student population. They got pushed back. And what I explained to them over and over again was that any time you realign, any time you're telling kids they're going to now become a dolphin or a gecko or a shark or an islander, a bulldog, it's hard because you're changing what they're they're used to, but you still can do it. We've done it many, many times, but they didn't want to do it. They insisted that they get a Tijen High. They made their case to their board. They made the case to the governor, and they supported Mr. Fernandez's plans. So, this was all DOE. This was not, this was nobody else. And because I was the pain, I was the I was the thorn on the side because I really believed we should have realigned our students. And it is hard work, but it should have been done, and we could have been using this property and this land for other things. But that but that's what happened, and that's where we are. And I just wanted that point of information to be had as Senator Morrison continues with his motion. Thank you.
On the Morrison amendment, there's a call of the question.
Mr. Speaker, I just want to say that this doesn't change the power of the board to open the school. It doesn't do that at all. They could proceed.
There is a motion to delete.
Right, and there's a there, it should be a motion to reconsider first.
The R.
Because the body considered that, voted on that motion yesterday, and voted to reject that deletion of B. Can can we do, can we just take a recess then?
On the motion to reconsider.
Just read that motion, Renee, from.
The motion is to reconsider the action of the body yesterday as it relates to Section B. All those in favor of the Morrison amendment to reconsider, please raise your hand. Motion passes.
Can I just call for a recess, Mr. Speaker?
We'll take a short recess.
Mr. Majority Leader.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I move that we recess till Monday, 10:00 a.m.
Any objection in hearing then? We stand in recess till 10 o'clock on Monday morning.